Meeting to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the Pledge.
(Inaudible) United States, America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier this week, 3,500 additional military personnel who are stationed at Fort Bragg in North Carolina were ordered to prepare for deployment to the Middle East. So before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to recognize these military personnel and their families, and during which time you may offer a silent prayer for the safety of all of those who are serving our country. Please join me in Thank you very much. All right, I've got a couple of announcements. I want to announce that we have parking validation for any folks who are attending the meeting this evening who parked in the county parking deck next door, or who utilized the transit system to travel to the meeting this evening. You can get validation for parking or transit from one of the officers who is serving us here at the meeting this evening. Please feel free to see them on your way out. We read the ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to avoid and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and transparent manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. All right, so we come to the agenda. Are there any questions from any Commissioners about any item on the consent agenda? Are there any questions from any members of the public about any items on the consent agenda? All right, we do need to have a, what I believe is going to be a brief closed session at the beginning of the meeting. So we will do that immediately after approving the consent Are there any other questions about the remainder of the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published with the inclusion of a closed session following approval of the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Hockeney, could you tell us the purpose of the closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A3, to consult with an attorney retained by the Board for legal counsel for a discussion of the county of Buncombe versus Joe Wiseman, 18 CVS, 4206.
All right, is there a motion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I think this will be a brief closed session. So we're in closed session now, and we'll be back momentarily to resume the remainder of the meeting. All right, is there a motion to go back into open session? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're back into the session. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider the Fernwood rezoning request. And Josh Freeman is going to get us started on this.
Good evening. Max, if you'll pull up the presentation, please. Okay, thank you for your time tonight. The proposed rezoning before you is for the Fernwood Mobile Home Park. First, let me, oop, wrong presentation there, Mr. Max, that's the applicant's presentation. If we could switch over to staffs. Thank you. We have two presentations for you tonight. There we go. Thanks, sir. Okay, so before you, tonight is zoning public hearing 2019-45. This is the Fernwood zoning map amendment. The application before you was properly noticed in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes and Buncombe County Code. In your packet, you should have before you an ordinance to approve, should you choose to approve, as well as a resolution to deny, should you choose to deny this application. Your options, as always in a rezoning, are to approve as presented, deny as presented, or you can continue, under guidance from legal staff, or you can remand it back to the planning board for further consideration. The applicant's information, Mr. David Day of LCV Venture LLC is the applicant. The current owners are Mr.'s John Carpenter, David Holdridge, and Paul Murray. The property is located off Charlotte Highway along Fernwood Mobile Home Park Drive. This is an image of the subject properties. I believe there are four properties in total on the west-hand side of Charlotte Highway, just across the street from Hemphill Noel Road. 6.39 acres in size. I say plus or minus 20 manufactured homes. There's 20 address points for that, for as many as 20 homes on the property. I believe there's between 18 and 19 present at the moment. Serviceable by public water and wastewater services. The rezoning request is to rezon the property from the current zoning district, which is R3, to Commercial Services, or CS. The map on the left is the current zoning. The map on the right is the proposed zoning. As you can see, there is Commercial Services zoning across the street, across Asheville Highway from the subject property. So this would be a contiguous rezoning. It would not constitute spot zoning. Just a brief summary of the two districts. R3 is your highest-density standard residential zoning district. It allows a fairly broad range of residential development types, primarily intended to be concentrated in areas where there's water and wastewater services. Commercial Services, on the other hand, does allow the same broad range of residential uses, but also is more importantly intended for commercial uses clustered along major arteries, again in areas where there's water and sewer services available. In terms of the dimensional requirements, your setbacks, things like that, minimum watt sizes, there's very little difference between the two districts. The key difference is in the potential building height. Your tallest building height in R3 is 35 feet, whereas your tallest building height allowable in Commercial Services is 50 feet. Couple of views of the properties from various angles. So you're looking north here. You're looking west. Looking south. Looking east. In terms of land use plan analysis, this is one that hits, kind of scores points on both consistency and inconsistency. It is within reasonable proximity to measure transportation corridors served by water and sewer infrastructure. It's outside elevations of 2,500 feet or greater. On the other hand, it does contain some limited steep slope areas on the western side of the property. Some moderate high-hazard slopes, although those are largely kind of transition areas, say along a roadway where you're, where there's a cut bank or a fill slope related to the road access to the property. It is in the floodplain. I think this is a key point, and the comprehensive plan, the land use plan, sorry, does recommend that, it suggests that commercial uses be directed away from floodplains. And it also suggests that such uses be directed away from low-density residential areas. From staff's perspective, this is largely compliant with your land use plan, specifically for the three reasons listed in blue. It's outside of high elevations. It's near services. It's along a transportation corridor. The steep slope areas on the property, they're, the land use plan recommends avoiding areas of 25% slope or greater. Your zoning ordinance really regulates areas of 35% or greater. Most of the areas that are steeply sloping on the property are to the far west, kind of where the topography jumps sharply from the river valley up to the crest of the ridge behind, at the back end of the property on the western side, which I had a visual to show you. And so it's largely areas that wouldn't be subject to a lot of development. Also, from a floodplain perspective, this is a, this was a tough one for staff and for the planning board as we work through the analysis. It is in the floodplain, however, it's also adjacent to a major corridor serviceable by utilities, and it's currently developed as a manufactured home park. The park was developed prior to the current floodplain development regulations, so most of the homes are older units that are even pre-HUD units in some cases. Most importantly, that project is not developed in compliance with the current floodplain development regulations, and there have been prior flooding events that have impacted that site. So from a rezoning perspective, staff feels that this would actually create an opportunity to redevelop the site in a way that's more compatible with potential flooding conditions in the future. As far as the low-density separation is concerned, if I go back to a map here real quick. So if you're looking north again, most of the higher sloping, or the steeper slopes are to the west side of the property, so to the left-hand side of your screen. The low-density residential uses that abut this property are all at the top of that slope, setback from the edge of that slope. So whatever commercial development might happen in the future on this property would, in reality, have little direct impact on those low-density residential properties to the west. Other low-density residential properties do exist to the east. They're across Asheville Highway, and so there is somewhat of a buffer there, if you will, if you want to view it that way. So staff's recommendation is approval as presented by the applicant. The planning board did recommend denial. Staff's recommendation, again, is largely based on general compliance with the land use plan, as well as the opportunity for a safer form of development under current floodplain development regulations. The planning board's recommendation of a denial, which was unanimous, was based largely on a concern about displacement of the current residents, which is totally valid concern. I think the applicant is going to speak more to that, and I'll defer to them on that point. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
One question, Josh.
Yes, sir.
So in light of the fact that there's a floodplain on the property, the fact that it's already been developed the way that it has, if it were to be rezoned and some different use were going to be, you know, developed on the property, it would have to, the new development would have to comply with all of the floodplain regulations that exist today. There would be any grandfathering, in essence, just because there was a previous development on the property.
Yes, sir. No whatsoever. Brief summary, any future development, whether it's residential or commercial, would have to be located outside of the floodway, which is the higher-velocity area of the floodplain, where the stream channel tends to be located and where you get the fastest waters. Anything outside of the floodway but still in the floodplain would have to be elevated to two feet above base flood elevation, which is FEMA's estimated high-water mark in a 100-year flood event. Commercial structures would also have to be floodproofed. And there's a whole series of other life-safety-related requirements that go along with that that would have to be met. Any impact to the elevation of the floodplain, so if some of the development were to potentially impact the floodway, say, whether it improves stream crossing, there would also have to be a no-rise study that proves that the project is not going to create any harmful impact downstream, across stream, or upstream related to the elevation of the flood level, if that makes sense.
Question. Looking at the maps, I would assume that not all of this is in the floodplain. I'm assuming the back part where it shows the tall evergreens, but looking at the map, I'm not sure if I'm at the lower left, but appears to me to be what would be in the floodplain.
Yeah, so the property is roughly-
But that's not the whole thing. So how many homes are impacted by the floodway? There's differences between floodplain and floodway, right?
Yes, sir. So all of the homes are in the floodplain. Some of the homes, at least a portion of them, are also in the floodway.
Tell everybody what that means.
So, great. So the homes that are located in the floodplain, which again are also, are all of them, are potentially subject to flooding in a major flood event, in a 100-year storm event.
100-year flood.
100-year flood. The structures that are in the floodway are additionally at risk of being severely damaged due to the high-velocity waters that traverse the floodway. So imagine the stream channel. In a 100-year event, the stream level rises. You have water in the stream channel that's moving really fast. That's the floodway, and that's where you can have structures destroyed. You can have persons washed away. In the 100-year floodplain, which is to either side of that, the water's not moving as fast, but it's elevating, and it's backing up, and it's ponding. That's really where you get water encroaching into the foundation system, into the insulation, into the flooring system of the home. So it's not so much lateral movement that you're worried about. It's more just water damaging insulation, electricity things.
And how much of it is in the floodplain?
I would estimate roughly one-half of the property to be in the floodplain.
Okay. Do we know if any construction, if they're planning on building on that, or do we-
I'm sorry.
Do we have any, do we know if there's, if the commercial developers planning on building on that, or they just want it for the front?
We have no direction, and I'll defer to that.
And I would just remind the Board that we really have to just consider the full spectrum of uses that could occur under the rezoning, not just whatever property. This will be in place for forever until somebody rezones it. So we have to consider the full spectrum of uses, not just what the current property owner might be intending to do.
Yeah, and I only ask that because I'm trying to understand how the property, I'm just trying to understand what the property looks like.
Yeah, it's a fair question. If you can, I'll direct you to a map in the packet.
I see that one.
You got it? Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. You're good.
Thank you.
Go on.
I'm done.
All right, any other questions at this time? Commissioners? All right. Josh, do you have anything else for us to know?
No, just turn it over to the applicant.
Okay. Should we go ahead and start the public hearing when the applicant begins, or after the applicant's presentation?
After.
Okay. All right.
Could we get the other presentation queued up? While he's doing that, I've got a hard copy. I'll hand it out to you all.
That's the one. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob, the host of the law firm where I would visit here in town. I'm here representing David Day, who's the applicant for this rezoning from R3 to CS Commercial Services. I want to thank the staff. They're good at thorough presentation. I don't have a lot to add to that, but I do want to provide a little bit of detail, some additional context and some details about the land use issues, as well as Mr. Day's personal work on this matter, especially with regard to relocation assistance package that we've offered to the current residents of the mobile home units in there. But first, I want to start with some, first want to start with, just to give you all some context. This is, this is, this photograph is looking from the, from within the Mobile Home Park up towards Charlotte Highway, and you can see that there's a driveway there. There's just one way in and out, and that's it. And it crosses Gash's Creek. This photograph was taken from a point slightly beyond, heading out of, heading out of the city of Asheville, from slightly beyond the Fernwood, the Fernwood Park. And this shows the sort of commercial nature of Charlotte Highway in this area. And it, the further you go to the southeast, it just, it kind of picks up in frequency and intensity, excuse me. This is a photograph looking across the street. It shows the same, the same kind of development right there along Charlotte Highway. Here we're getting into the Mobile Home Park itself, and in between those two, those two units, you can see there's Charlotte Highway. Here's a, and as Josh described, the area where the Mobile Home units are located is relatively flat. All of it's in the floodplain, and some of it is in the floodway. It's, and there's a creek that flows along the backside of the property. So in a flood event, this can be like a bowl, and because the property rises up pretty steeply on either side. And anecdotally, we know there have been some rescue efforts there in the past. Here's a close-up of that same photograph showing, you can see in the distance there that that sort of white apparition behind the tree there is a car on Charlotte Highway, which gives you some idea of how close it is to Charlotte Highway, a major five-lane, five-lane road, US highway. As far as some of the zoning for the zoning, as far as some of the planning justifications for this action that we're requesting, I looked a little bit at your comprehensive land use plan, and one of the strategies in there is to adopt zoning for the county that coincides with land use areas depicted on the proposed comprehensive land use plan, which is map 12 of February 2016 Plan Update. That Plan Update includes a description of things called hubs. There's a hub A and a hub B. Hub B, you can see, is intended to be for a sort of a small radius service area for the areas around it. This is a photo, is a detail from the 2006 Land Use Plan Map, which is map number 12, the proposed land use map, and it shows a hub B, which is the blue dot right there closest to Asheville. And that's the approximate location of the Fernwood Mobile Home Park. And that's designated in the 2006 Land Use Plan as a hub B, which is appropriate for commercial, for commercial uses. Now that, the 2006 Land Use Plan, as you all know, was pre-zoning, so there was, there was no zoning associated with this designation. But the strategy in your current plan calls for zoning to coincide with the designations in the land use plan, and that's, that's what we're seeking to do. Here's the, here's the statement of district intent from the, from the ordinance. Josh has already explained this to you, but it is, it is appropriate for clustered commercial development in order to encourage the concentration of commercial activity in specified areas. And this is, this property is adjacent to commercial areas. As Mr. Freeman explained, the adjacent residential areas are, it is on the directly abutting property, but there's a good buffer created by the hill and the, and some forest land between the developable area of this property and those adjacent residences. So even though it's adjacent, it's, there's a, there's a natural separation there. This property clearly fits within the, within the strategy of your land use plan, and we think that commercial services zoning is appropriate for it. Now, the planning board and this commission are right, absolutely right, to be concerned about the potential for displacement of the current residents. It may not be strictly a land use issue, but it's surely a planning concern. We're aware of that. And Mr. Day has met with the residents of Mobile Home Park. He did that on Sunday. I sent you all a report about that, and offered a generous relocation assistance package to cover moving costs, including moving homes, moving those homes that can be moved, and paying the moving expenses for the households that live in homes that can't be moved. We know that this cannot be a condition of the zoning, but it's a legitimate concern, and in good faith, that's something Mr. Day is proposing to do. I'll, David lives in the community. So do I, and we think it's the right thing to do. So in summary, on my part of it anyhow, this, we think that this, that this proposed rezoning is unquestionably consistent with your plans. It's recommended for the subject property, and commercial use is more appropriate in this area. As Mr. Freeman mentioned, in response to a question from the Chair, any new development will have to comply with the flood damage protection ordinance and prevention ordinance and other environmental ordinance, which the current use does not. And we think the relocation assistance available to the current residents will address the, many of the concerns about displacement. So we'd ask for your support, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Day, who can explain a little bit more about his interactions and work with the residents. So Mr. Day is from this area. He's a contractor and developer. For those of you all familiar with the Fund Depot, he's responsible for that. So we think he's done a lot of good in the community, and will do good here. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Day, unless you all have any questions for me.
Doesn't look like there's any at this time.
Okay, and of course, we'll both be here after his presentation and after the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Hello, I'm David Day. I live in Fairview, out off of Brush Creek Road. And first off, I just want to thank you for your service to Buncombe County. My wife and I, we've, we've been here, and our family, we have four children and nine grandchildren. We've been here 30 years in Fairview and Reynolds community, and we love our community. We're very active in it, and we really want the best for it. And I can truly say that I'm very satisfied with the direction that Buncombe County is going under your leadership, and that it's very exciting to live in these times. And so I just did want to say that to let you know that I do appreciate you, whether you decide in favor or not. I do ask for your support for the CS rezoning. This particular piece of property is very important to me because I drive by this property every day on my way to work, on my way home, and I want to see this property developed into something that our community can enjoy. I'm not an out-of-town developer coming in and, you know, just throwing something up. My heart is really in this project. Especially, I think this property is very important to Fairview and Reynolds because it's one of the very first properties that you see when you- because it's one of the very first properties that you see when you come that way. So I think it's very strategic to what people think of our community. I believe that the CS zoning is very appropriate for this property in how it should be developed from a land planning perspective, an engineering viewpoint, as well as being consistent with the comprehensive plan that your planning department, our planning department, has prepared, and how Charlotte Highway really should be developed and will over time. The planning staff agrees that the property should be rezoned to commercial, you know, for, I believe, the right reasons. I believe that even the Planning Board would have agreed with the staff if it wouldn't have been for the displacement of the 18 families. As of the time of the Planning Board meeting, I had not had the privilege to meet with the families that live there. Soon after the meeting, I was able to meet with the residents and address their biggest concerns that they had. The two main concerns that they had, I tried to put myself in their situation, is that, how long do we have? How long can we have to find, you know, our new home? Some of these people have lived here for, maybe since 1978, I believe, is when David Holdred's family took over the park. Some of them have been there a very long time. There's actually multiple family members living there, so you have siblings and so forth. So their first problem was, how long do we have? And then the second problem is that, how much money is it going to take for us to relocate where it's not a terrible inconvenience to us and that we're going to be able to get situated in a new home? I'm happy to report that we were able to come together as a developer and as the tenants in the Mobile Home Park and find a peaceful solution. We've come together and agreed that rezoning this property to commercial, CS rezoning, will provide the most value in the development so that each family will receive a relocation package and be able to have 180 days or more to move. If the property stays as residential, you can imagine the price per acre for commercial land is quite a bit more than residential, and honestly, there's not money left over when you have a residential community to try to be generous. I own the property next door, and my original intention was to... Because it's already permitted, I'm ready to go, engineered and so forth. But my original intention was to make this Phase Two of that subdivision. That subdivision's been approved as 17 homes, or I believe you could have 34 duplex units, because I believe you can have a duplex on each one. So I was going to continue the road that has already been approved into this subdivision, but as we got into it, I really believe that the best use is commercial. So several of the park residents, I believe, are here, including Renee, who's the park manager, Louis, who was our translator, but also a resident there. So I encourage you, if any of them, you know, if you have any questions to ask them. Also in the audience is a real estate agent, Mark Morris with Beverly Hanks, and he has volunteered to help them with locating, you know, mobile home parks to move to. And in talking with him, he even has some newer mobile homes that will be able to hopefully replace those six that are pre-HUD. So I'll mention to you what the pre-HUD is. I think it's June 15th of 1976. Any home that is that age or older, those homes, I believe, are not allowed to be moved because they have no HUD label. So that causes a, you know, terrible inconvenience for those people. So, at any rate, what we're trying to do is help, you know, the people relocate. And thanks to Mark, he has been in the Fairview community for 40 years, I believe, and has many contacts. So I hope that you will see that I have tried my best as the developer to help the existing residents and to give consideration for what is best for this property, what is the best use for this property, and for the entire community of Fairview. As I endeavor in developing this property, I will do so in a way that I have a market study done to answer some very important questions. The first one is, what does the Fairview-Reynolds community really need? The second one is, are there any services that could be provided through this property that aren't currently being met? And then the third one is, how can I develop this prime property that is the first that you see when you come into that community, into an aesthetically pleasing, you know, property? So when I drive by with my wife in the car, she said, why, you know, did you do that? I don't want that to happen, you know? So I ask for your support in rezoning this property to CS, where I believe it is truly the best use of this property. It is consistent with the planning department's vision, and it provides the best opportunity for the current residents. And I want you to know that my heart is in this development. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, Mr. Day, thank you. I don't see any initial questions, but stick around and we'll call on you if we do. All right, Commissioner, we need to open the public hearing on this rezoning. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 5:55 PM. And so any members of the public who would like to comment on the proposed rezoning are welcome to do so. We would just ask you to come up to the podium and just let us know your name and where you live. And you'll have three minutes to comment, and you'll get an orange light, and I think you have 30 seconds left, and then a red light when your three minutes are up. And when your time is up, we ask you to please stop because we want to give everybody the same amount of time to speak to the board. All right, is there anyone who would like to comment on the proposed rezoning? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Barrett, and I live at 101 Charlotte Highway. The Fernwood Trailer Park, the land that Mr. Day is referring to, that he purchased that borders it, would belong to my husband's family, and we still live on that property. So we're in very close relation to where all of this has taken place. Some of the biggest concerns that we have is traffic. We were once a two-lane road. We are now a four-lane road with a turning lane. It is extremely hard to get in and out of our driveways. I have waited in some instances up to 20 minutes to get out of the driveway. That doesn't happen all the time, but that just shows you at times the level of traffic. Up the road above us, they are putting in an apartment complex called The Reserve at Gassius Creek. I tried to search to find out how many units would be in there, but I was not successful. I couldn't find it anywhere. But the clearing has already begun, which is going to mean more traffic in our area. I am a native of Buncombe County, and I am saddened to see how Charlotte Highway is becoming concrete and asphalt. It is not what we in the Reynolds community like to see happening, the amount of development that is going on. We are the main corridor into Fairview. So this is a very heavily trafficked area. As far as the residents having to relocate, I'm very concerned about affordable housing. The Reserve at Gassius Creek that I mentioned was supposed to have been slated as affordable housing. I have noticed that the sign has been changed to Luxury Apartments. So once again, affordable housing has been put on the back burner. I'm not sure how these people are going to afford having to move in the Asheville area. Our daughter and grandson moved in with us in February of last year because she, as a pharmacy tech who makes a very good income, cannot afford the housing in Asheville on a single income. And so I don't know how these people are going to go from paying only a lot fee to having to pay the rent in Buncombe County, which is averaging anywhere from $900 to $2,000. And the money that they will get in order to locate is only going to last for so long. And I'm concerned because I see so many people who are homeless on our streets that are not bums. Many of them are people who have jobs. And I don't want to see this happening to families that are in a very close-knit community as they are. We hear laughter and music. We hear them working on each other's properties, and this is a tight-knit community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir. And then, Mr. Yelnam, you can go next.
Hello, my name is John Thorpe. I live at number 22 in Fernwood Mobile Home Park. My wife and I bought, Karen over here, my wife and I bought the trailer that was already there. We assumed a loan in April of 1989. This April will be there 31 years. Over that time, I have totally remodeled everything, in the water lines, light switches, kitchen cabinets, countertops, bathroom, the whole nine yards. And I wasn't at the meeting that they had Sunday. I wasn't aware of the meeting. I was at work. I found out about it the day after. And I didn't go for or against the rezoning because I'm not clear on what is taking place here. One thing I do know is I do not want to move. I hate the fact that we would have to. My wife and I are both in not the best of health. We work part-time, come from meager means, and this home is basically all we have. If we have to move out, I have no idea where we're going. I'm sure there's many other residents there that don't want to move either. But they don't know where to go, what to do, either. I'm very nervous about public speaking, but I do have to say, I had expected to live there the rest of my life. I've been there almost 31 years. Everybody in the community gets along great. We have a good time. We help each other out. And as far as the flooding, it's never got up above like a foot and a half. It's never entered my home. It's caused some structural damage, but, you know, we fix it. And all I know of one rescue, and that was when there was a retaining wall upstream that had collapsed, diverted water into the park. And there was a culvert down by the parkway that was clogged, so therefore, that caused the water to rise. And it did knock a couple of buildings I had off the foundation, moved them back, jacked them up, strapped them down, and it's all good now. I just really hate to move. There was nowhere for us to go. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much for coming. Mr. Yelnam, you can go next.
What I have to say is not about the relocation or the moving, because I think you heard it. Most people don't want to move. That's why a lot of us locals will fight to stay where we're at. We'll fight to the bitter end, me being one of those. But as I hear these conversations, I see that we pass laws in one center that has to apply throughout the county. And we've got mobile homes that are in the floodway. Now, as development occurs upstream in the floodway and people fill it in to raise their structure above the floodway, what's that going to do to the level of the flood in the Mobile Home Park, folks? It don't take a college degree in environmental science to know exactly what happens. It's raising the water level. So the 100-year floodplain that the government gives you is at best a yes that is not modified and changed each year as more building occurs in the valleys. And all you've got to do is look at the city of Asheville. How many houses have been built in valleys, Al, where there used to be a valley that would soak up water? So all I've got to say, and I told this to a big developer out there, when he put his parking lot in, I said, "Don't put a culvert in. Put a concrete, drop it down like this, let the water flow over it, elevate it like this, so the water pushes the concrete in the ground." And when it's flooding, guess what? You can't get in or out. But what happens when it quits raining? You've got no damage. So I don't care what happens here in this park. I just think that we need to provide the technical expertise to minimize the flooding. And if this development is approved, then there should be no building in the floodway. Don't fill it up high because you're creating more flooding downstream. Now, if there's any way to develop it and move those mobile homes out of the floodway up to that place where they don't flood, you may have a solution to your whole problem that might even work. So all I'm saying is, think beyond what you're seeing and hearing. Because, folks, you're not going to stop the rain. I don't care how you feel about climate change. You can't control the rain or the flood. You have to work with it. And Kmart, Walmart should have been done the same way, and I made that recommendation at the City Council pre-meeting. And of course, it fell on deaf ears. But I'll keep saying it until you all listen, or I die. And I got a feeling I know which will appear first. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. John Kelly, and I live in a neighborhood just a little farther outside of Asheville than the Fernwood Mobile Home Park, the next major residential area, going in the other direction towards Fairview. So we have a concern there because we have the bridge over the waterway that leads to the highway. It's our only way in or out. However, the bridge has flooded on one occasion, has had some structural damage, but has been repaired. If we did have more flooding with backup, that would be certainly a problem for us because it might shut down our access to the homes there, over 20 homes there. I've been there for over 20 years now. I do certainly agree that we are developing more and more of a traffic problem. I have also waited quite a long time at times, particularly on the weekend, like Friday afternoon, it starts getting very heavy. So I think we would be in for some accidents there if there was not a traffic light. But I do agree the major problem is trying to relocate the people that are already there is going to be quite difficult in this economic climate. So I think we do have to consider our neighbors in that way. The idea of more development, as the gentleman previously has mentioned, is probably going to impact such that, you know, the 100-year flood is going to be more like the 25-year flood. And we've already had some evidence of that in our neighborhood. So I think most of the residents in our neighborhood are not eager to see this without very careful planning as far as future flooding, highway access, where we don't put other people at risk. I thankfully have a car that can get out in traffic pretty quick, but I have to use that turn lane to pull it into, and I don't think that's really what's intended. I think it's supposed to be turning off the highway, not turning into the highway. But sometimes, that's the only way to get out. And for being a medical professional, I do need to get out, and I can't always... And for being a medical professional, I do need to get out and can't always, you know, wait till the very optimum time. So, I just think we have to be very careful about making this plan and consider all the participants.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Uh, Mr. Weiss, on the back.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and Ms. Board. I think your duty as the commissioner is, first of all, health, safety, and welfare. When you look at this development, don't look at the land, don't look at the economic thing, look at the people. If you want to do the economic thing, look at it. How many, how much money would it cost to take care of seventeen families and put them in housing somewhere and do it all the time and talk about it? That's a lot of money. So, do the right thing. Turn it down for the people. These are poor people. These ain't people that can just hop out and go get them something. We need to think about the humanitarian side of it. You run for election, you're all out there hugging babies and kissing people. So, why don't you do the right thing here? Do it for the people that live there, not for your personal gain or politics. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else would like to speak during the public comment? Uh, yes, sir.
My name is Mark Morris. Unequivocally, I am the broker that represents the transaction for Mr. Day. I do live in Fairview. I actually own the commercial building that adjoins the property that's been acquired for future development. And then, the next property closer to the parkway would be Fernwood Mobile Home Park. And there are accidents. There is traffic there. There's rear-ending collisions just about every week in front of my building. And I do see that. But I'm here to speak my mind and my emotions and to just make a couple of statements or opinions. I was at the meeting Sunday, and I will say that it was unanimous that every person there signed in support of the commercial zoning and the relocation package. The other four or five that were not there was because of circumstance, because they were at work. But I did communicate directly with Renee, the park manager. There are challenges. There is flooding. There are several pre-HUD units that are there that cannot be moved. So, the challenges are clear. But let me tell you why all the people who were present signed this plan on Sunday. Because it was presented with fairness. So, let's talk about fairness and why the proposed plan is fair. Number one, it's compensatory. There's money set aside to take care of the residents. It may not be every dollar that's absolutely necessary, but it's a fair compensation package. It's compassionate. There's rare cases where a developer is spread with the free market. The free market is creating the ability for the developer to compensate and share the benefit of the free market and the transitions that are occurring up and down Charlotte Highway. Many of these units are pre-HUD. I am working with some other property owners, some park owners, in relocating and possibly donating. I do have one commitment for a nineteen eighty-six manufactured home that can be acquired at zero cost other than the cost to relocate. That would be provided to one of the residents. I'm also working on two other donations of manufactured homes that we need to relocate. There's always a solution to a problem. The problem in this case is how do you balance affordability with public safety? It isn't a floodplain. It isn't a floodway. These residents are in harm's way. The conscience would be much greater if there was a death, if there was a casualty, if there was a loss of life because of the flood. And these conditions override any sense of affordability.
I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to ask one of the speakers. Thank you for speaking, ma'am. All right. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Renee Hensley. I live in Lot Twenty. I'm not good at this. I've been in that park since I was six years old. I'm fifty-three now. We've had only three incidents that I know that it flooded. The water's gotten up, you know, quite often, but not out of its banks. I feel like that people actually want us gone from there because they think mobile homes are an eyesore. We actually have a good-looking community for the most part. My father used to live, they lived there before he passed away, and he used to keep the road on the highway mode and looking good all the time. And now, there's another gentleman that's took that over since he died. And most of our homes in there that can be moved are in their eighties. Most parks don't want that old a home. They want newer homes. So, again, we're stuck trying to find a home to live in. And affordable housing is not affordable in Asheville, not for us. That's all.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, anyone else? All right. Okay, yes, yes, ma'am.
My name is Rose Anderson. I've lived in Asheville about ten years. We live in the neighborhood Charlotte Forest, which is behind the Mobile Home Park. And I'm very concerned for these residents. In fact, my whole neighborhood is concerned for these residents. There's four or five of us here from my neighborhood. They're a quiet mobile home park. There's no drugs, no drama there. They're nice neighbors. We are happy to have them near us. And affordable housing in Asheville is, it's not there. I guess you guys know that. The relocation package these people have been offered, maybe y'all should ask them what that is. I understand it's not very much. The residents maybe could answer those questions a little bit better because I wasn't at the meeting. I've only heard it secondhand. But I hear it's anywhere from twenty-five hundred dollars to six thousand. And you can't even pay first and last month's rent for an apartment for that. So, that, that, that's just not going to cut it in Asheville. So, I just wanted to say that I feel like we need to vote for people to have homes, and these people need homes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak before we adjourn the public hearing? Appreciate everyone coming out. Want to hear from anybody who's got anything they'd like to say? But if there's not, I'm going to adjourn the public hearing at six sixteen P.M. All right, commissioners, are there any questions at this time? Or a motion?
I have some questions. You might not be able to hear me. I live in Fairview, too. Fifty-three years. It's a long time to live there. I lived there when it's two-lane road. I've been there for thirty years. The five-lane road, you know, turning and stuff, that doesn't bother me. I get out where I live, a lot of traffic. I make it out easy. But the affordable housing part, Mr. Day, I wish there's something that we could do because that's eighteen homes. They may not be the best homes, but they're homes. I don't know what you're paying for the property, and I don't really care. And she's right. I used to come up through there, and every week, there'd be grass real high at the end of the guardrail. And you've been driving it, too. And the grass was cut all the way up to going into the entrance, above and up on that hill. And I thought, somebody is really taking care of this, taking care of this. You're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. I understand that. Am I? I was for it in a way, but then I look at certain people, and it takes that point away from me. You know, it only takes three people, and people are right in their own, in their own forms. And I'm sorry, but I've been sitting up here working for poor people, elderly people, for how long? They're not elderly, but the men I have a whole lot. Gentleman's got thirty-one years in down there. He hasn't lost a lot yet. You know, I've seen it. I remember when they built the wall, you know, when it's done the five-lane, and they did the wall there right before you get to the park. So, I've seen it all. I've seen how they made a five-lane road. They blew up the rocks. They blew up, I mean, they blew up everything. I understand that we're getting more neighbors, and I understand everything in Asheville or Buncombe County, or not Asheville, but in Skyland or Fairview, there's nothing getting cheaper, probably not even this property. And I understand you want to do something to property beside it, and I understand that you would have to build this property up to get it in effect, usable for whatever. One of the hardest decisions I'm going to make, and I've got to sit here and think about it a little longer. But I look at these people. And it's not because the lady spoke about the traffic, and it's not because you spoke about you would like to bring the property to this. It's about the people. There's four of them that did show up. And I don't know what to say to them. Can I just go ahead and say, "Well, you're just going to have to move"? Well, I understand moving in Asheville or Buncombe County is not the easiest thing to do and moving a trailer or a mobile home from, you know, they're basically single, it's all, all mobile homes in there, single, single wides. Somebody's not listening.
There's a single wide?
They're single wides.
Is there, is there one double wide in there? Let me just say for the record, we just had a presentation earlier that had this ability to be able to see in someone's kitchen window. And when I zoom in on this, I can't see whether it's a metal roof or a shingle roof. So, I'd like to be able to do that on this, if we can do that on the taxpayer. But I won't go on there. I won't run that route, but anyhow.
But I'm not against-
There's not one double wide? I'm sorry, Commissioner Farrar.
That's no problem. I'm not against anyone in this deal. I want people to understand that. And I live in their district. But I live in their district, too. And it's not for a vote. And I couldn't care less about a vote. I've sat up here caring for people best I can for seven years, and I've got one year left, and I'm going to have to continue to do that. So, I'm going to sit here and think about it and listen to the rest of it, but we'll see what I have to say when I'm done. But I am here, you know. I've seen things happen in the last month that you wouldn't believe happened, but they have. And I just have to think about it, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions from commissioners, or is there a motion?
So, Commissioner Farrar did ask a question. Is there, is there, is there not a, so there's not, not one, there's not a double wide on there to-
There is one double wide.
Yeah, I can see it. There is one, there is one double wide. When you turn in on the entrances, they're on the right end.
Uh, Mr. Belcher, give a question or further comment?
Well, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a few comments. So... And here everybody's, here's, here's what's interesting about this. I've actually met, met Mr. Day at one of my grandkids' funnest places to go at Fandepo, and I'm, and I'm sure you and your family are just, you know, wonderful people. And I think everything that you've said has been very genuine. Also know that to, yeah, I'm not going to make my decision based on what I'm getting ready to say, that when you have a home and you own a home and you open the door to that home, it's, it's your house. And, and basically relocating a manufactured home is basically, means that you, you have to step into, I mean, years to, you're totally stepping into... It, it's just not that easy just moving a house and then putting it somewhere. And I also recognize that a pre-seventy-six HUD, I think the rules are you can't, you can't move it. But, you know, once you're, you're in the house, you're taking care of it, you know, it can, it can outlast me or anybody. So, all those things that have been said are true. You know, I'm, I'm, I've looked at the property. I look, and I think that, in my opinion, the property is not as well-suited for, for commercial development as some folks might think. I think everybody's speaking from their heart, you know, this evening. And I, and I think after weighing, and I, I've run through these, while y'all are sitting up here, if y'all see me looking down, I've been running through these maps back and forth and looking left, you know, left and right at the property up there. And I have some concerns about it being turned into commercial. So, so for that, those reasons, I'll be voting no. Oh, we don't have a motion yet?
Not yet, sure.
Commissioner Belcher and the rest of the board. Yes, but first, before, the statute requires before you turn to the motion on whether to zone, to rezone or not, you need to adopt a consistency statement. And there's two. One stating that the, the rezoning plan is inconsistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and one stating that it's consistent with it because there are different portions of the plan that this, this project does meet. Some are consistent and some are inconsistent. I think Josh had those up.
Yeah, so I've been listening to it for seven years, and it still confuses me on how-
It is confusing, but what statute said is you have to adopt one prior to considering whether you're going to rezone or not.
So, I'm going to make a motion that it's inconsistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan, and for that reason would not be reasonable. And the public commissioners, is that what? Motion I need to make? I just made-
That is a motion you could make.
I'll say it. All right. Put the motion in the second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to follow up with a question?
I don't know what motion to make. I mean, what do I have to do?
There's a resolution to deny your package, to deny in advance of the ordinance-
For those of you that are out there, it's just kind of confusing. I want to make sure we do it right. So, where is the resolution?
Well, kind of, it's in, you see it?
Say, you have a chairman?
Uh, let me just call to the, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution denying a request to amend the official zoning map of Buncombe County on the proposed property. To deny the rezoning, yes.
I second.
All right, further discussion? All in here, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion? All right, it passes. All right, thank you all for coming out. Both sides of the issue who, who spoke to this, we appreciate hearing everyone's concerns about this. So, thank you for coming out this evening. All right. And if folks want to stay, of course, you're welcome to, but if you don't want to, we appreciate that as well. But if you, so if you choose to leave, just, we do need to move on to our next business. I just- Yes, you can.
So, I want to make sure that there's no one in the room that they understand what happened. You understand what happened? Very confused.
The property will remain zoned as it is currently?
Yes, I just want to make sure. Does it is, I didn't think it were because that's why I wanted to say that. I didn't think people were totally-
Thank you for the, all right. Ms. Pinder, I did have any reports. All right, we have to go business. The first item in our new business is a follow-up on the Catholic charities request item that we discussed in our previous meeting. And Ms. Pinder will- And, um, Ms. Pinder will speak to that item.
I can tee it off for you. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I received a letter from Catholic Charities requesting written consent to continue their refugee resettlement program here in our county. So you have the letter in your packet and you also have a copy of the executive order that was written in November, in last September, requiring written consent by the county and the state permitting refugees to be resettled in our, in our county. So the question for the board tonight is would you review that and give us guidance as a staff to sign that letter allowing refugees to come? I would say in the letter you would notice that last year, well, twenty eighteen, Catholic Charities placed forty-four refugees in our county.
All right, thank you very much. And there's, the, um, there was a representative from the organization at the previous meeting. I don't believe there's anyone here this evening, okay.
Yes.
All right. All right, Commissioners, are there, are there any questions or a motion? And I believe that, I believe there's a couple of ways we can do it, but maybe the simplest way would be to, uh, to delegate authority to the county manager to, uh, execute a letter.
So-
Or, or, or the chair, but, you know, let's just recommend, let's just use the manager.
Okay, so I only have, I have, uh, this, this came up, I think this came up before. Now, what we did, okay, what, it was very, it was pretty tough when it came up before because, the, the conversation we had, uh, that, that brought this up to us again was that we had some, um, families here now that were, uh, from the Russian Ukrainian community, right? Is that correct? Okay, that's what, that's what was said. And that, the purpose of this was to, uh, to give permission to unite them with their families, correct?
Correct. When the lady was here last time, she shared with me that she relocates families. So the families that are here are requesting their families to come. That's how they would do that.
I just wanna make sure that, that that's what we're doing. And that's what we're allowing county manager to do. That it's not doing a open letter in the future to do more than that without the commissioners knowing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I read it, but I also read some of the stuff and I was like, yeah. Well, I, you know, I, I, I did read it and it is not specific in that it just says, um, and I guess the result of the executive order is that, that it can't be done unless we get permission. All right. All right, that's all the question I have.
Anyone who would want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the county manager to enter the extended partnership.
Second.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, and the next item is a budget amendment for the Governor's Crime Commission grant. And Rachel Nybar and Jennifer Barnett will share some information with us about this.
Thank you and good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Um, actually, if there are specific questions related to the grant, um, content, Diana Sierra, who is the, um, program-
Family Justice Coordinator.
Yes, thank you. Family Justice Coordinator is present to answer those questions. Um, but we bring before you this evening a budget amendment request, um, which would additionally, if you approve the budget amendment request, would enable us to, um, receive the grant award. But this is a continuation grant for the Buncombe County Family Justice Center through the Governor's Crime Commission. The amount of the award is one million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, eight hundred, one hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. For budgetary purposes, we would round that to eight hundred and seventy-eight. This is a two-year grant fund. This grant is funded through the Victims of Crime Act, so VOCA. Again, it supports the continued services, um, that are already in existence through the Family Justice Center, um, through partnerships with our, the existing agencies that are already housed with the Family Justice Center. It is funds in support of nine contracted positions through those organizations to provide comprehensive trauma-informed programming for victims of domestic and sexual violence at the Family Justice Center. It will additionally fund travel and registration for onsite partners to attend the National Family Justice Center Alliance Conference, where they receive training on domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, and elder abuse in the context of the Family Justice Center model and accountability to survivors. The required twenty percent local match is met through the in-kind donation of office space at the Family Justice Center and, um, with the Family Justice Center Coordinator's salary. So the request is to, um, enable us to budget both the expenditures for this two-year grant award and the, and to receive the revenue. If there's any specific questions about the grant?
The question I have is this does not commit us for anything after two years. And these are contract employees.
That is correct, and they're actually not contract employees for the county. We actually engage in a contract with the partner agencies who are housed at the Family Justice Center, and they employ the individuals.
So you need a motion to approve? No approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion in second to approve the budget amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who's worked on continuing to, uh, make this a really successful program and to secure these, uh, additional funds. So it says a lot about the, um, says a lot about the work we're doing here. All right. We have, um, on the board appointments, two, uh, positions on the Women's Commission that are vacant.
These are the only two, three applications we got?
Correct.
Well, that makes it easy.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Claudia Jimenez and Nora Schaff to join the Women's Commission.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We now come to, um, public comment, um, about any other items and-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Oh.
Can I just mention one thing?
Yeah.
Um, at the last meeting, um, we talked about interviews for the Greenway Parks and Recreation. So I wanna make sure that, um, we mentioned that and see if y'all have decided on the interview timeframe.
Yes.
And we, and this was in twenty nineteen, so we said that we would possibly try to do that in the first few weeks of January.
Do we wanna try to find a time right now to do that?
Is that approved again?
We, we could, of course, look at the time prior to our next meeting as one option. That's gonna be on Tuesday.
Twenty first.
Twenty first. We do have a specially called Housing Committee meeting that day, right? Did we talk about that committee meeting today? But, uh, do we know how long that's gonna last?
No, we don't, um.
Or if we could, I mean, if we could plan on keeping it to, I'd kinda like to do it on that Tuesday. We're gonna all be here, so why don't we, why don't we, um-
How many, how many are, are we on?
Uh, it's gonna take a couple of hours for sure.
I think there were at least double digits. I think it was around twelve individuals.
Do we have to do a briefing? Sorry.
What do you mean, a briefing?
Well, there's agenda briefing with Commissioners that-
The pre-meeting?
Pre-meeting, yeah, pre-meeting.
Can we, I think we're gonna need to, um, either not do that or make it shorter and do it closer to the regular meeting time. So that we, 'cause I think we need that afternoon to do interviews. Is that, would that be agreeable to, um? That same day? Okay. Well, why don't we say this? Why don't we have our housing meeting from one to two? We'll do, we'll do interviews. We may not get through all of them though. We're just gonna have to look at the time, so we don't have to do all the math and that, um, on, on the spot. But why, why don't we just plan on everyone being here from two until the regular meeting starts? And we'll, we'll see what all we can fit into those three hours.
Can we move our horrible housing meeting earlier?
I would be open to that.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Why don't we do that from eleven to twelve?
The staff's okay with that?
And then we can start at one o'clock with interviews and hopefully we can get our, uh, we're gonna review, do a review of, um, uh, our clerk and our finance director that afternoon.
Mr. Chair, uh, we'll just get with Lamar. We will adjust the, uh, the, the publication in terms of the time for the, um, the housing, housing committee meeting itself.
Okay.
So what makes that happen?
Is this the one we were gonna bring any outside folks on?
No.
That's a separate meeting. Great, thank you. Very good.
Yeah, I'm good with that, so let's just do that.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna be starting that early and we have a meeting before work, so that people don't have to leave, so they can go find food, that's really good. Why don't we plan this right over one? All right, sound good, something to plan?
I also want to just mention that we are probably gonna do, have the same process for the strategic planning grants. So I just wanna put that out there, so be thinking about timeframe for that as well.
Let's, let's work on it for the next meeting.
Okay.
Same, same thing, let's just get ahead of it.
I mean, generally the Tuesdays are good, but sometimes we do have other meetings that might just, that we're after is might not be free. So we'll just have to, let's check that out at the next meeting then, we'll select the date.
Just wanted to put that out there.
So how many did we have down?
Turn your mics on.
Wondering how many, uh, we will have that day, twelve?
It was between ten and twelve. I'm not really one hundred percent sure.
Still, it doesn't matter, it's gonna take a long time.
Okay. And just so, since we have so many, why don't we just talk for just a minute about the, uh, how much time we're gonna give to this? Um, my recommendation would be that we do, um, ten-minute interviews. That we allocate ten minutes for each, for each interview. I know that's not a lot when we have as many, you know, I think you just, um, if you have additional questions, you can always call folks, speak to them outside this process, but in terms of the group interviews, it will still be two, at least two hours for this purpose. And that would be, um, that'd be my suggestion. What do others think?
Do you all have a timer?
Yeah, yeah. I think we should try to give everyone the same amount of time.
Yeah.
We're just gonna need to keep it focused.
I think if you, if you do, if you do ten minutes for the interview, you're probably okay. But, you know, everybody's shaking everybody's hands, you know what I mean? If you, if you give them ten minutes, you hit the button, they got ten minutes, that's fine.
All right.
Time for the interview.
All right. Very good. All right, now we come to public comment. So, uh, if there's any folks who would like to speak to the board, please, uh, feel free. You're gonna have three minutes, Mr. Yalton, you can go first. And you've got three minutes. Uh, let us know your name, where you live, uh, when you get an orange light, you've got thirty seconds left. And when the red light goes off, the three minutes is up, and we ask that folks conclude then, so we give everyone the same amount of time.
I don't even think I'll use my three minutes tonight. Boy, if I don't, I'm slipping up. I always time it perfectly. I'd like to know where in Buncombe you don't have a traffic problem. Simple question. Where in Buncombe don't you have a traffic problem? You been on twenty-sixth of a morning coming in at seven-thirty? You stopping at New Stock Road or the other side of that? Because if they have had a bump up at New Stock Road, it backs up to Weverville. I remember Ken Bible on radio one time says, oh, we won't have no problem with traffic in Asheville. When you building apartments all over the place, your advertiser's the number three place in the nation to rent. Come on, all you rich pokes. No wonder we got traffic problems, 'cause half those cars have got Florida license plates, New Jersey license plates, Georgia license plates. And we talk about affordable housing. Folks, if you drink water in Asheville and flush your commode, you're subsidizing public housing. And if you wanna know how that's done, see me after this, 'cause I won't tell the public how that's done. But it's done. And every time you give two-point-two million to HUD or to Habitat for Humanity, where does that money come from? Us. All of us in this room, you plus everybody that should be out here. And every time you do that, what are you doing to the cost of housing? And every time you pass a law and say you gotta do this, you gotta do that. If it's not a wise choice, you increase the price of housing. I bring up that flooding thing again. I'd like to see this guy come back with this and say, we're gonna redo this whole thing. We're gonna take this, we're gonna put a commercial area next to it, and then we're gonna find a place for those seventeen homes and cut a deal with the mobile home dealer that's probably up there on the board that would find some real nice used homes, and he sets up a nice little community right next to where there's a bunch of jobs. And some of those people might have better jobs, but you know what that's called? Creative thinking, flexibility, which is one thing that government does not have. And I mean it, and I will say it, and I'll say it as long, Brownie, as you allow public comment. Appreciate you taking comment on your actions tonight, too. And I'll say it until the day I die. And I'm telling you folks, if you don't start listening, you're gonna dig the hole deeper. You know, that's no way to get out of a hole, is it? Dig it deeper, dig it deeper. More money, more taxes, give more away. Thank you very much. I didn't use up all my time.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Rice and then Mr. Sullivan, go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a member of the board. That's my boy Don, you know him? He really good. You were just sitting up there and then, and taking some of you down. I'm getting a head start, Don, you need to help me out now. You need to help me out. We got a real, real start here in the pre-meeting. We talked about reevaluation year twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one. I want yous to start talking about your campaign trail and how you're gonna give the taxpayers some relief. I want that to be your issue on your taxes, you know, going out here and telling people what you're gonna do. I heard the technology, uh, in the pre-meeting, that, uh, technology, uh, kinda lowers the cost on everything. But let me show you something. In a reevaluation year, have you ever seen the taxes decrease that come in to Buncombe County? Did you ever see the budget decrease? I mean, these are just simple questions. What are you doing with the money? All the extra money that comes in, somebody's got a pet peeve project, a pork barrel or something to spend it on. Where's the savings at? I tell you where it's going now, it's going to lawyers. It's going to people out here that stole from the county. And it's gonna get even worse. It's gonna be spending more of your money, taxpayers' money. So what I'd like to ask you right now is to start thinking about what a good decrease in taxes you're gonna give me. I'm one of the residents. Where you gonna give me a decrease in taxes? Don't tell me what you're gonna spend it on, tell me how you're gonna decrease it. Don't they look big foot, are they? They don't know what to think about this. We need commissioners that are thinking about how to decrease, not increase. And we're gonna bring up some other subject, uh, in the very near future about everyone that's sitting up there and how your salary has increased. So be thinking about that, I'll be back.
All right, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Sullivan?
That's my David.
Mr. Chairman, a member of the board. My name is Andrew Sullivan, and my partner and I own a small retail store just a few blocks from here. I live in the Riceville section. I'm also one of the city of Asheville's appointed representatives to the Tourism Development Board. And I'm here this evening to give you some of my thoughts on the current process to review the occupancy taxes. As you discuss projects and options for the occupancy tax, I'd like to help by dispelling the few myths that are out there. The first myth- The first myth is that hotels impose the occupancy tax on themselves so they could get, so they should get to decide how it's spent. In the first case, not a single hotel or Airbnb pays any occupancy tax. They just collect the money from their customers. Secondly, while they have requested that the tax be imposed, they are using the county and the full force of our government to collect the tax from the customers. As long as they are using taxes as a way to collect money, we the people should have a say in how it's spent. The second myth I'd like to dispel is that there's some sort of gap between what the people in our county want and what the people in the hospitality industry want. People in the hospitality, hospitality industry want affordable housing and transportation just as much as people in the rest of the county. The only gap that exists at the moment is between what the people in our county want and what some of the hotel lobbyists tell us we are able to ask for. The third myth I'd like to dispel is that we can only spend the occupancy tax on certain things. That is simply not true. While most counties abide by the general guidelines, there are North Carolina counties that spend money on non-tourism-related items. However, you need to give lawmakers in Raleigh a good, really good reason why you should be allowed to spend the money differently. Buncombe County has that really good reason. More than 3% of the housing stock in Asheville is Airbnbs. That's just not the highest percentage in North Carolina. It's the highest percentage in the nation. Tourism industry is directly affecting the ability of our residents to house themselves. If Buncombe County is going to continue to collect these occupancy taxes and help our area market itself, we should be using some of those taxes to help ameliorate the effects that it's having on our area. I stand here this evening as someone who benefits from the tourism area every single day, where people who come into my shop downtown. And I think that we need more money on long-term spending for our community and less on short-term spending on marketing. This commission is in unique position to demand that change. You hold the power of the purse and I ask that you use that power to request more than just little money for a few projects around the county. Please use that power to help those who are most adversely affected by the changes that have taken place with the increased popularity of our area. Commissioner Frye is quoted in the papers wanting to seek reelection to help seniors on fixed incomes and poor people. What better way to help these populations than to use some of those occupancy taxes to try to make it a bit easier for those struggling? Standing up here and talking is easy. Posting on social media is easy. I recognize that governing is hard and even harder when trying to find an agreement between county, city, and state lawmakers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you all, thank you all for coming out this evening. We have a couple of announcements. Jasmine, you have another one?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know that this Thursday, January 9th, the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee will be having a community outreach meeting. That'll be from 3:30 to 5:00 PM at Dr. Wesley Grant Senior Southside Center at 285 Livingston Street. Commissioner Whitesize, Vice Chair Presley, and myself will be there along with members from the committee. The goal is to meet with community members, answer questions, and help people get a lot of information about the ongoing application process. We hope to see folks there.
All right, thank you very much. And on January 21st at 3:00 PM, actually, we just said we're not going to do this. Never mind. On January 21st at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will have their regularly scheduled meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. As we discussed earlier, we anticipate having interviews with applicants for the County Greenways Committee earlier that day. Those are public meetings, so anybody who's interested may attend those interviews. All right, we are, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.